Meeting to order of the Board of Selectmen for, I don't know if it's January, February, we haven't met in so long, but it's February 11th, 2015.
I'd like to start the meeting by calling for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands our nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, thank you. Just one quick announcement before we get started. For those of you watching at home, we'll be televised until approximately 7:10 tonight. Because this is not our regularly scheduled night, they're going to switch over to the conservation meeting at 7:10, so we get bumped at 7:10. So after that, this meeting will still be recorded, it will still be available online on demand after the 7:10 cutoff, but the live feed will end at 7:10. So that's one announcement. The second announcement, actually, let's go to approval of minutes first, and then we'll go to the next announcement.
Move to accept the minutes of January 5th, 2012, open session minutes as written.
About 2015.
I'm sorry, 2015. It's been so long since you've been here, I don't even know how to make a motion.
Pretty sure it hasn't been three years, so it's been close. So we have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
All right. Okay, second announcement, we're going to take things a bit out of order tonight. We are going to move licensing up to the very next agenda item. So we're going to go into licensing now and discuss the Merrimack and Smolak Farms and Butcher Boy issues. So I will hear a motion to go into licensing.
Before we discuss this, that's okay?
Yeah.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
We are now in licensing. Want the gavel?
No, I'm okay. Use my fist if necessary. I trust it'll be not a gavel night. We shall see. First on the agenda, licensing commissioners this evening is Merrimack College. Do we want to take these? I have no questions, I don't know if the rest of the board is Merrimack here, sometimes they are, sometimes they're not. We have first one for Saturday, February 21st, it's the John Denver Musical Tribute. One Day Wine and Malt for the Ronin-Tynan Theater Show on the 6th of March. And then another one day Wine and Malt for Benny Goodman Tribute, oh, on April 25th, all at the Rogers Centers, the Rogers Center from 6:00 to 10:00 p.m. Everything is in order, if anybody has questions or...
I'll make a motion to approve the licenses for Merrimack College. One Day Wine and Malt for February 21st, March 6th, and April 25th, all from 6:00 to 10:00.
Does anyone have a second on that?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Have fun, some of those sound good. We have a change of manager at Butcher Boy. I'm sorry, I have two packets, so I should have done better and put them together. Where is it? I know that everything is in order on it, but I'd like to just find it.
Smolak?
I don't know, it's in the old one.
It's a small one, right?
Might be in the small one. My apologies. Anybody else find it?
I'm looking it up now.
I saw it. Yeah, I got that, but I don't have the paperwork. Thank you, I'm sorry. Oh, it's in the smaller one, I'm sorry. Change of manager, Donnie Amin. Changing to Donnie Amin. Everything is in order, there's no issues with it that I can see. Does the board have any questions or...
No.
Can I have a second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you for coming in.
Thank you, oh, there she is, Don, I'm sorry. Thank you, you're on set.
If you want to come up and say something.
Now we have to get out of work, a half hour early.
Hey! We're still on TV, they may know. Okay, we're moving back into, we had rescheduled this from the beginning of the year, 2015 entertainment license for Smolak Farms. In all of your packets, you should have something from Smolak involved.
Do we want to go into that?
Absolutely, you feel free to start, Mr. Selectman Gordon, if you'd like, and you guys can come out.
So I was just wondering if, does Smolak, Mr. Smolak want to formally present this to the board as far as what the plan is, or do you...
You're presenting, I need a second. Keep it short? Or I can keep it much longer?
Dig into it.
I'll take the short. But for the record, John Smolak, attorney for prospective licensee, with me is Michael Smolak, the owner of Smolak Farms. Just as background, as you know, the applicant has been working extensively to undertake efforts to look at ways to mitigate sound levels at the function pavilion at the farm, and retain the services of a firm called Kavanaugh Tachi Associates, which is an acoustical firm that's well-known not only in Massachusetts but throughout the region for its expertise in acoustics and sound level measurements. And also, they have a specialty in outdoor music venues as well. And you have, I assume, received a copy of the January 22nd report, as well as a cover letter, which outlines the program that had been proposed, and that was also dated January 22nd. And so we've taken a look at a lot of different options, and have developed the program that you saw, that's identified in the cover letter, and we think works very well. I think that in developing the program, we wanted to ensure that we had a foolproof mechanism to ensure that sound levels are maintained at acceptable levels. And the only standard that we have in Massachusetts is the MASDEP air quality standard, which is 10 decibels above background. That also includes a DEP noise policy that interprets that air pollution control regulatory standard. And so that standard generally provides that sound levels can't exceed 10 decibels above background during the quietest operating hour at a residential dwelling. So in other words, the background level is noise level as if no music were being played at that particular operating hour. And so in order to determine whether, you know, one complies with noise policy, you have to take measurements to develop background levels. And so our consultant, CTA, has developed a background measuring standard, and they're projecting that that background level is going to be approximately 30 to 40 decibels in that range, which is the suburban rural background level that's identified in many sources of information. And then with that background level, what also has to be measured is sort of a method by which to determine the sound level within the function pavilion tent that will be at such a level so that by the time it reaches a sensitive receptor like a residential dwelling, that it reaches that 10 decibels above background level, or it does not exceed that level. And so just as background, what I wanted to do is, if you could take one and pass it along, I put together a compilation of decibel level charts that you could publish, that are published on the internet, and I put together three or four of them to give you some ideas of what those levels would be. And as I mentioned, we expect the ambient sound level or the background sound level to be around 30 or 40 decibels in that range. And if you look at the chart, what you could see is that the 30 or 40 decibel level equates to a sound that's characteristic of anywhere from a whisper to a quiet library to the humming of a refrigerator in the 30 to 40 level, decibel level. And if you look at the charts, again, these charts are all fairly comparable in terms of the decibel levels. If you look at what an 80 decibel level equates to, and that's again the noise level that would be potentially the maximum level within the sound pavilion tent, that level rises to the level of something like an alarm clock, a garbage disposal, or a vacuum cleaner as a sound level. So I wanted to give you some grounding and basis of what sound levels we're dealing with, and what were projected to be created as a result of this program. So I'll let you draw your own conclusions on these levels, but I at least wanted to give you some background on what those decibel levels might be. In my letter of January 2nd, I put together a program that identified the program that the farm plans to follow to implement, this sound control program over the coming months. And if you'd like, I can go through that, or just paraphrase from it, but basically, what we're putting together is developing a so-called house speaker system that'll be developed. And so what we'll do is we'll use DJs that will be required to use this house system to regulate sound. And the specs for that house system are in Exhibits A and B of that report, and they're pretty detailed. The speaker systems will be installed in a fixed position within the tent, so they can't be moved by the DJ, but will be pointed away from the most sensitive receptors to that sound. And that's also exhibited, that's also identified in the report. As I said, the DJs will be required to connect to that house system through a signal output to the house system, which includes sort of an amplification system or input system, which limits the amplification or noise levels. It's, I guess by analogy, it's sort of like a governor on an engine, it just regulates the sound, and so it can't exceed a certain level once it's set. And so as I mentioned before, what we're doing is we're setting the background level, or measure the background level, then we'll calibrate from that background level the acceptable sound level within the pavilion, within the tent. And once calibrated, that calibrated sound level will be locked into the system, so it can't be modified, unless it's approved under a standard operating procedure that'll be developed by Kavanaugh Tachi. Kavanaugh Tachi is going to put together sort of an operating procedure so that they'll be training the employees of the farm, and will actually be on site, not only to calibrate, but also to measure the sound levels for the first two events of the year, to make sure that the system conforms to the specifications. Okay, so as sort of a belt and suspenders approach, we're also including a, what's called a, I guess it's a signaling system that's called, the name is called a Yakka Tracker. And basically, what it does, it has a yellow, red, and a green light. Green light means that the sound is operating at an acceptable level, yellow light means that it's approaching a level that's the unacceptable level, and the red light is if you're meeting or exceeding that level. We don't expect to hit that level because we'll already be calibrated, but that system will be in the sight of the DJ, and will also be in the sight of the Smolak Farms employee to make sure that those sound levels are maintaining their acceptable level. We don't really, again, we don't really need that, but it's a second measure of protection, as sort of a, again, a belt and suspenders approach. And what else? A few more things I just wanted to mention. Actually, as I mentioned, the system would be calibrated, and CTA would prepare a set of standard operating procedures to be followed by employees for each event. And as you can see, we've put a great deal of thought into this process. We didn't think we had to go this far, but we wanted to because we owe it to our neighbors in our neighborhood. And by the end of this process, we've probably invested in excess of $30,000 to make sure that the system works. So, you know, we're serious about it, we wouldn't spend this money unless we thought it would be something that would work. So, you know, we hope this information is sufficient for the commission to make a determination of the issuance of this license. Be happy to take any questions.
I'll just start out by saying, I think this system has great potential. It's pretty much, you know, as you just said, is a significant upgrade or a significant system to kind of control the noise, and that's basically what I think the neighbors want, the ability to live their life and not have it, to be able to enjoy their backyards and their houses, you know, every weekend during the summer and the fall and the spring. So I agree, I think that this is an excellent plan. There are some questions I have, you know, regarding some of the things, and basically also the implementation of it all. So if we approve the license tonight, and, you know, you granted the license, it's dependent on a lot of work that still has to be done, I would imagine. Just a few things that I would be interested in. When the testing is done, to set the baseline ambient noise level, I think that's where the CTA is going to go in, they're going to do some baseline testing as far as how quiet it should be, and then, right?
At different times of the day, that's correct.
And then, yep. And then I would imagine they are going to do some testing as far as, okay, well, if you know, playing with the volume inside the tent, where does it register in those receptors, you know, as far as what level the noise is going to be, right?
Yeah, there's an operating procedure in terms of testing protocol in the documentation.
So a few things. I think the neighbors should be notified when that testing is going on, so they're aware, you know, and so they can also get a little sense of what the noise level is going to be. I think you'd also want permission from the neighbors to go on their property to put some sensors there, so how can you know what the noise level is on their property unless you go on their property?
May I through the chair? Yeah, just, we don't need to go onto the property to measure it at the property levels, it's a mathematical computation that would be prepared by the acoustical consultants.
So then my one concern is that because of the topography of the land, the tent sits in a little valley, if you will, and there's a little hill, and then it comes out, and then there's the houses. I'm told that at ground level, the noise is one level. At the closest house to the tent, at 20 feet in the air off the ground, the noise multiplies because of the way the sound is carrying. You know, I think it would be a good idea to have some sort of receptor up there saying, you know, yeah, mathematically, it's within the, was it MASDEP regulations?
Yeah, 3.697.
Mathematically, but in reality, when you put a sensor up there, it complies. I think that would be an easy thing to do, and...
Well, I'm not sure that is. I won't pretend to be an expert in this area, but what I can say is that we identified that issue to our acoustical consultants, and they said they could address that in terms of their sound measurement.
Are they here?
They're not here, no.
So, I mean, again, I think this is great. We've met with the neighbors, I've gotten feedback from the neighbors, I think they think it's great. You know, coming to, you know, a solution, I think both sides have definitely worked with each other, and that's wonderful. I think for me, and for maybe the rest of the board, we would want assurance that, I've been out there, you know, noise in the 70, 80 decibel range right in their yard, that's too loud for, hold on, in their backyard. I know what the thing says, but I've heard the bass, because it's 70, and then the bass jumps up, and the DJ talks, and it's too loud, okay? So I think it would be pretty easy to, during a testing day, you've got the music inside the tent at whatever decibel inside the tent, someone at CTA, I'm sure, has the ability to have a decibel meter and walk the properties, and actually see, yeah, we're in compliance, this is great. It's going to be, you know, so, you know, 30 to 50 decibels in the neighbor's yards, I think is more than acceptable.
I would assume that would be part of the calibration.
No, he's saying no. He's saying it's mathematical.
Well, right, but the device is calibrated for one level, and then that is hopefully more sensitive, so it can account for the distances, the rest of the sound.
They're not using a device.
The belt and suspenders device is what we refer to.
That's only, I think, that's only telling you, on the dance floor, the red light, green light, yellow light thing is telling you what, you know, so in the dance floor, it can be as loud as it wants, as long as it hits the neighbor's property line, that's the law. I mean, so if it hits the neighbor's property line, it can't be above a certain decibel, right? That's the at MASDEP guideline, correct?
The residential property boundary, the sensitive receptor.
So that stoplight thing is really just for the dance floor, saying, okay, well, if it's 80 decibels...
I misunderstood that, I thought the sensor, the actual receptor for that would be out further in the field listening.
No, no, if I could address that issue, it's basically the issue of bass and the sort of the thumping noise was something we specifically addressed and identified to our acoustical consultants, and they built that into the amplifier system to mitigate that. And so that was one of the areas that was the most troubling, I guess, from what I understand from neighborhood input.
Big tweeters, small woofers.
Yeah, we've incorporated that into our design, so we don't think there's any other assurances that you really need, other than the reports that we're providing.
So, but if, along the lines of what Selectman Gordon said, the noise, it will be one level at the dance floor, but then what you're saying is when we get to the, you get to the neighbor's yard, it is going to be within the guidelines of the Massachusetts Department of Environmental Protection?
Correct.
Okay, which is, which we think will be between 30 and 40 decibels plus 10.
It depends on what time of the day. It could be that, it could be that low, it could be 30, it could be 40, it could be a little higher than 40, depends on what background is. Background level varies from the time of the year and the time of the day.
But in the rules, it says that you need to set the ambient noise level at the quietest time of the day.
For the operation.
For the operation, so...
So, for example...
But then it refers to like at 1 o'clock in the morning or something like that, 4 o'clock in the morning.
That was an example. Again, that's a policy. Our consultants are telling us that the background level is measured, for example, if you have an event occurring at 10:00 a.m., you measure the ambient noise level at 10:00 a.m., as if there were no music. Same thing with 10:00 p.m. So there'll be a range of background levels that we'll have to deal with and calibrate.
Who's calibrating the machine then?
It'll be the acoustical consultant, will develop standard operating procedures. No, no, he'll develop operating procedures, and basically, it's not going to be modified significantly. If it is modified, it just depends on what those measurement levels are, and if they have to be modified, it'll be in accordance with the standard operating procedure that'll be followed by farm personnel after the second event and following events.
Okay.
So the acoustical consultant will be at the events for the first several events to make sure that it's properly implemented.
So this won't be implemented by the time the season starts?
Oh, yeah, it will.
Oh, so they're going to come, the first two, to make sure it's done appropriately?
That's right, they're going to calibrate, and they're going to trouble test it.
Well, to address Selectman Gordon's concerns, why can't you just calibrate at five lower than what's recommended? Why do you have to be at the recommended? Why can't you just go lower?
Well, we don't know what the level is going to be until we test, and so we want to make sure it's a level that folks can hear at the function as well.
Well, I mean, I think if it's 30 to 40 decibels in somebody's backyard, and it's 80 to 90 to, 110, and whatever, however it works, I don't claim to be an expert either.
Nor am I.
I mean, it's going to be double or triple in a tent. If you come down from, you know, the volume's on 10, and you come down to eight to make everybody happy, I don't, I think you're going to hear it in the tent.
Well, you know, we don't know yet until we test it out.
Well, no, I think mechanically, you have everything set up, that's...
I think this is great, too, yeah.
Yeah, but it's, it's the, it's, it's the way you're going about to establish the sound level in the tent, the way, and, you know, I guess all I'm asking, if it's done mathematically, if, you know, if we turn it up to 80 decibels in the tent, or let's say 100 decibels in the tent, what's, you know, the closest neighbor, mathematically, it's going to be 40 decibels? You know, I think that's what you're going to do, right?
Well, keep in mind, we're going to test it the first two times out there, too. I mean, we'll have measurements being undertaken at the first two live events, so we'll know...
Where are the measurements going to be taken?
It's in the procedure, in the manual.
Are they going to be taken on the neighbor's property?
They won't be taken at the property boundary, no. There will be, there will be measurements taken, but they won't be at the property boundary, there'll be a mathematical determination.
I think, I think, easy enough to put property, to test the level of the noise at the property level, at the property boundary, because that's what we're concerned about, that's what you're concerned about, you're concerned about the neighbors. And from what we understand, the noise level for the neighbors is louder 20 feet off the ground at that little kid's window, I think that should be included in that test. And I don't see how or why a big company like, I don't know how big they are, but this acoustical testing company, I'm sure they have, I work at a rehab department for speech therapy, and I was out there with a handheld sound decibel meter that told me what was going on. So, you know, on a testing day, it would be very easy to go up into that, and I'm sure they'd love to have you there, go outside, right outside the bedroom window with the decibel meter, and, you know, have someone on the dance floor saying, okay, turn it down a little, turn it up a little, you know, that's perfect. I mean, I think that is a pretty easy... Right, but I think we could also accomplish the same thing by virtue of undertaking the computation, and then doing the testing as identified in the protocol. I don't want to deviate from the protocol, because I don't know what that difference means.
What I'm suggesting is kind of a belt and suspenders approach of certifying that, how you are, in ensuring that the neighbors are going to be satisfied, kind of, and I'm sure you would be satisfied, knowing that, yes, we don't want to, you know, 30 to 50 decibels, you know, let's just say that's the number, mathematically it's going to happen, and we've actually tested it.
Could I have two seconds? Just because I'm trying to... Which neighbor?
Which neighbor is...
Well, which, if some, just hypothetically, if someone from the company would go, we're referencing a neighbor, is it...
Okay, so if you're...
Is that an address specific?
Yes, there's an address specific. I don't have the address specific, I'm not going to say the name.
Identify, but so there is, so the proposal is a specific address, and is that the closest...
Well, there's five neighbors that are...
Five neighbors that are involved in this, so...
Right, I guess I'm just asking for clarity for anybody watching, is the suggestion that all five are tested, or one?
Well, no, I think, I think at least three from where the houses are situated. There's two that are very close to each other, one on another section of the property that is also close, that should be, you know...
So more than one?
More than one, yep.
And what is the standard level of noise that would need to be achieved at the property location?
Well, what they're saying, according to the documents that they've given us, and according to MASDEP, you've got to test the ambient noise at the quietest point, you know, which they're thinking it's going to be 30 and 40. You can add 10 to it, so I'm guessing it's going to be 30 to 50, which, I'm going to tell you, 30 to 50 is acceptable. I mean, that would be wonderful, if you could get the noise level down to that level at, you know, the closest neighbor's house, and I'm sure they would be happy with that.
You might be there already.
No, you're not, you're not there.
How do you know that?
I was, I went to more than, I went to a few of the events at the neighbors, I walked around the neighbors with a decibel meter, and they're, and they're not there, they're in the 80, the 70 to 90 category, so...
Just a lawn mower, right?
What's that? Yeah, but even this is not, I mean, you can't, 70 to 90 with a bass thumping is different than a vacuum cleaner, or, you know, oh, okay, well, a gas lawnmower, I mean...
So push more, no more power, more is going to push more, it's now, keep the sound down.
Well, actually, that would, you'd have to...
You're splitting his.
Can I ask you, would you be willing to go back, can you go back to your CTA and ask them if they'd be willing to go to, for the first night to go calibrate at the, on the property of the, if they get permission, on the property of the neighbors?
It has to happen during the pre-calibration. See, the way I understand it, you're going to go, you're going to, you're going to test the equipment, right? You're going to calibrate the sound. When that occurs, that's when you should do it. That's well before, I would imagine it's going to happen in April or something like that, well before the season starts, or...
During the calibration, would they be willing to do that?
Well, I'd also like to say that that neighbor that's of particular concern has also voiced the fact that...
There's five neighbors, Mr. Smolak, not just one.
Well, the one neighbor has said, no matter what happens, you're not going to be satisfied.
Well, that might be the case, but I'll tell you what...
So I'm in no mood to accommodate that neighbor, because I think we're going to comply.
This is not about one neighbor, okay? This is about five neighbors, okay? You may never accommodate everyone, but I'm telling you, the majority of the neighbors would be happy with this solution, you know, and I'm on your side with this, I like this plan. I just don't understand why you can't have a decibel meter and say, boom, we're good.
And if you don't, I mean, I totally see where Selectman Gordon's coming from. I think this is phenomenal, I think you've gone above and beyond. I think it's showing that you're making a true investment in the neighborhood. But I'll be totally honest, if it was 80 to 100 decibels every Saturday and Sunday and Friday night, and I lived next door, I'd be flipping out, especially if I had little children sleeping upstairs, I'd be flipping out. So I'm torn in regards to that. I think that if you're unwilling to do what Selectman Gordon is asking, then the first event, the neighbors will have the right to have somebody there with their own. That's what's going to happen. Let's be honest. Let's be honest, that is what is, that is what's going to happen, because they're going to call the cops and you guys are going to be before us again, and we're going to be fighting about this license again. I mean, I just feel that those neighbors are going to continue to call the police and there's going to be issues. I'm of the mindset, if it goes to twelve, knock it to ten, what's the big deal? I go to weddings that are too loud inside anyway, so I don't know, maybe I'm just getting old.
How many hours a year are we talking about here, seriously? I know what a noise is, a noise is from nine to ten to ten.
So, over a course of between, what, May and October, or June and October? Maybe thirty events in a year that last three hours each?
From six till ten o'clock at night, from six to ten o'clock at night, Friday and Saturday. And the license.
Maybe about, maybe about four per, I think that's the allowable time, four hours.
What I'm saying is, I've been up there when they had the weddings. And until the music really starts, it's acceptable. It does get a little loud for that last hour. And I'm trying to figure how many hours a week are they putting up with this loud sound? I mean, I know, I know in one of the emails I read, it was last year, about, I don't know who said it, but about, sound carries pretty well there and they can hear their neighbors talking in the pool.
It's across the water, the pond.
Yeah, so that, does that mean we've got to shut the pools down too, or I mean?
I think that's irrelevant, the number of hours, if it's any number of hours that someone's being inconvenient.
There's just one more thing and I'll shut up, okay? I've been in this town all my life. I live on Sutton Street. I get airplanes, jet planes, every single day taking off, okay? I hear whistles from trains every night, every day taking off. I hit the traffic with four ninety-five, okay? Every single day, every hour of the day. I understand what they're doing, it sounds like a good plan, but why are we fighting over, you know, we're making a move, they're spending a lot of money to get this done. And I mean, I don't see, you know, I really don't.
I'd like to make a motion to move this along, to approve the Smolak license contingent upon the,
No, no.
The actual testing of, pre-event testing of the sound in the, in the, in the tent and then tested at the neighbor's boundary line with a decibel meter. And at, I can get the address for you, the window of, that's twenty feet off the ground, which is a different sound than it is down on the ground, that that is actually tested also before any events are held.
So, is that your motion?
That's my motion. It's kind of convoluted, I can clean it up if you want.
Okay, I'd like to, I'd like to talk about it.
So, what I'm asking for, I'll repeat, I'll repeat that. What I'm asking for is I'll approve, I make a motion to approve the license contingent on satisfactory testing of the proposed Mass Department of Environmental Protection regulations that at the boundaries, the noise falls within the Mass Department of Employment laws, but it's actually tested with a sound decibel meter rather than just mathematical equations. And then also, I want to add on to that, is that it should be tested one house, twenty feet off the ground, at the bedroom window where, for whatever reason, whether it's the topography of the land, it is always louder there than it is on the patio in the back of their house.
Do we have a second on Selectman Gordon's?
I'll second that to move it along, but I'd like to make a comment. I think it's okay to include in there a contingency at the borders, because the folks have access to the borders without permission, because it's on their own property. But I think making a contingent upon someone else giving them permission to their property. Well, let me finish. Giving them permission to test it on their property without them here tonight to consent to that, I don't think we can do that, because what if they say, no, I don't want CTA on my property? And then we've contingent a license upon that and they're not going to allow them on there, so we.
So, then, just, what I would say is, you could do it on his property, on, you know, you know, right on the edge of his property, as the closest point possible to the neighbor's property.
I would be okay with that, because they have permission.
If, well, no, okay, say, well, no, first preference would be on the neighbor's property. If permission is not granted, then closest point on Smolak property to that neighbor's property. I'm telling you, everyone will, Michael, you were there, they all said that you could walk around their property all you want with, you know, testing the noise.
But they're not here tonight and I'm not willing to make a contingent upon someone that's not here.
Selectman Smedale.
The events are generally felt during the season where there is leaves on the trees. I mean, we're going to now take into account whether the wind's blowing, whether it's raining that day that can contribute to the sound. Without the leaves on the trees, and when you're, most of your events, there's full foliage. Maybe a couple of weeks in October, maybe a little bit in May, but for the most part, it's full foliage. That all can, it's a buffer. I mean, foliage is a natural buffer. So, to do that test now wouldn't seem fair.
I think that, what are you going to do, the testing in April? Which first event?
It'll be before the first event, probably in May at some point. What I would suggest is that if you're going to condition this on testing, that we do it at the property boundary on our property, rather than the neighbor property.
Let's take a.
As a matter of inches.
So, then, so.
It's a matter of feet.
Yeah, that's all. Well, it could be a matter of inches.
So, we keep it on the property, that way, in terms of Chairman Valancourt's comments, we wouldn't have to ask permission for their.
I would, I would suggest to make it clean is to, for the, it should be, if the neighbor permits, grants permission, it should be on the neighbor's property, because that's what the law is, right?
It's at the property boundary.
Okay, so.
So, we can handle it by measuring at the property boundary, which is on the farm property. Each of these neighbors, I believe, butts the farm property.
Yeah, they all differ in the picture.
So, we take a measurement at the property boundary, on the Smolak farm property, as Chairman.
Do you want to make a friendly amendment to your?
What's that?
Would you like to make a friendly amendment, or are you making amendment, rather, to your?
So, then.
Motion?
If, you know, if I'm hearing you correctly, you're going to take the measurement at the property boundary. It'll be on the Smolak side of the property boundary?
But it's in here that you're already doing that. In two locations, right? It's in here, that they're going to do that already, in two locations. I thought I saw that.
Well, I have two concerns.
Maybe they have a boom, they could put them.
Tracy, I have two concerns. It's the height of that window, right? But it's also, the, the, the testing should be done with a decibel meter rather than, you know, you know, so it's absolute verification rather than a mathematical calculation.
It actually would be stricter at the property boundary than it would on the neighbor's property. It's closer.
It's closer, right?
I do think, though, that neighbor's window should be part of it.
Can I just, because I want to get, I don't want to weigh in on this piece, that's for you folks, but I want to make sure that we're, we have the parameters of the license clearly defined before we end up in a motion and leave and think we're all set.
I wanted to talk about that.
Can we address that now to make sure the rest of the items contained in the license are consistent with the request?
Sure. Yeah, the hours of operation would be Monday through Thursday evening between twelve PM and seven PM, on Fridays and Saturdays between twelve PM and ten PM, and on Sundays between twelve PM and nine PM, except on Sundays preceding a Monday state or federal holiday, in which case the Sunday closing hour is extended to ten PM.
John, can you give me that one more time? You're going as fast as I normally go, I've lost them.
Yeah, really, and he's really fast.
I don't think that's changed since last year.
No, last year's license was different.
No, it was? No, I thought we changed it along the way.
I did realize last year's.
I have no question.
Yeah, last year's license didn't include the Sunday holiday, the Sunday.
Ah, the Sunday holiday, right.
Twelve to ten, that's the same. Twelve to nine. And we had, on the license itself, eight to eight on the Monday comparison.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
Got it.
And the request is still May through December, correct? I mean, May through October, it's October, May through October? May through October, got it.
And my other concern or question would be, when is the testing going to take place? And will you come, will you produce a report for the Board of Selectmen to, to see that the, you know, it's in compliance with the license?
No question.
They'll give it to us after the fact. They promised to anyway.
Okay.
Would you also, Michael, Smolak, would you be willing to come back before your first event and give us an update on the status?
Again, I, Michael, I've met with you, you met with the neighbors, you know, I think this is a great solution. We're there. Just, we, just do the testing with meters. Let the neighbors know when you're going to do the testing, so everyone can hear, yeah, this is what it's going to sound like, this is good. I think that is, goes hand in hand with the idea that you want to be good neighbors and you want to do the right thing. You've done ninety-nine percent of it, just do the rest of it and that's all.
All right, so we have a motion on the floor, we have a second. It was open for discussion. It's very convoluted now. So, do we, can we explain the motion one more time, or?
I'm going to try to paraphrase Selectman Gordon's motion into a motion for a license and then you folks can choose to do with what you'd like.
Thank you.
So, the motion is to approve an entertainment license for two thousand and fifteen for the period of May two thousand and fifteen through October two thousand and fifteen for Smolak farms located at three fifteen South Bradford Street, under the following conditions. First hours, as provided by the applicant, Monday through Thursday, twelve PM to seven PM, Fridays and Saturdays, twelve PM to ten PM, on Sundays, twelve PM to nine PM, except on Sundays preceding a Monday state or federal holiday, in which case the Sunday closing hour is extended to ten PM. Further conditions would be those provided in the January twenty-second, two thousand and fifteen letter from Attorney Smolak and the conditions set forth therein, with the one modification under Section Four, which relates to the prior installation, that be modified to include the testing with an odometer at the property line between the five of butters identified in the.
Odometer?
Is that what it's called?
No, that's for the cars.
Oh.
That's to get gossips.
One of those, pick a tool. Well, maybe we'll test it with that, it might be easier.
Yeah, maybe.
Sorry, I stand corrected. On, at the property line, as property line of the five neighbors identified in the sound study. And that further, as carried forward from the two thousand and fourteen license, that the, the sound absorbing panels, which were installed last year, remain installed on the east and north sides of the tent. I think that's it.
And the last thing would be that window is twenty feet off the ground. I'm just trying to, you know.
And you're going to add that?
But that was part of his motion.
Then you want it up.
You did have to take it off. That was part of his position.
Twenty feet up?
I would like, I'll identify the house to Mr. Smolak and.
Take the vote.
What's that?
Let's take the vote first. So, we have a motion.
And I had a friendly second.
Take your second. All those in favor of this particular motion.
Which is Andrew's plus my little, my, the measuring, measuring it with the decibel meter.
So, the decibel meter?
Decibel.
Decibel.
Anyway.
The appropriate, the appropriate sound detecting device at the neighbor's, one neighbor's yard, out the window, twenty feet off the ground.
Wait a minute, now you're saying they have to go back to the neighbor's house? Or you just want it twenty feet in the air?
No.
On the sunny day or.
Yeah, I said it all along. It's, you stand on the patio, front of their house and back of their house. It's loud, right? The, I mean.
You just want it twenty feet in the air?
So, no, I want, I want, I want.
You want it in that house?
Yes, I want to know.
All right, I get it. So, we have a motion, we have a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those not in favor, say nay.
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 I abstain.
Oh. Abstentions? Oh, you're doing, okay. I'm sorry, your motion?
No problem, so I'm making a second motion, Andrew's motion, that the, basically, what's going on in here, except adding the sound listening device.
At the property line.
At the property line, at all the neighbor's property lines.
Okay, new motion, so I need a second for that.
I'll second that motion.
At all the property boundaries?
The five neighbors that are.
Which are all accessible at the farm.
They're all about the farm.
As long as it's only.
There's one that doesn't, but.
Yeah, there is one that doesn't.
Is that the furthest one away on Dale Street?
No, that's on South Bradford.
There's a.
So, there's a property.
Okay, so the property boundary closest to that neighbor?
Yeah.
One of them, I think, was on Clay and Rescrite, which is nowhere near.
No, not that I'm aware of.
I mean, this one way over here.
I think we're talking about the five neighbors that are identified on the drawing, which all seem to be, from the drawing, anyway, it looks like.
Two of them are not accessible.
Well, I think it would have to be the ones that are accessible.
I think the one that's. I think, well, what's interesting about the property you're talking about, it's a different direction, so the closest.
Okay.
So, I think if you get to the sound, the boundary closest to that neighbor, then on your property, that would be fine.
Or believing.
Right, because there's another neighbor there anyway, right?
Which one?
Where's, this is South Bradford, huh? This is the.
Well, these are the property.
Did you want to comment on this?
This is the farm, you drive past the farm here. You take this driveway, it's this house here.
No.
No, that's on the property.
Does anybody else have a motion?
Well, I'm good with the motion as presented at this point. We just need to clarify what we're talking about. I mean, to me, it's only the farm boundary, it's not anybody else.
Actually, Attorney Smolak, on, I don't know what page, but in Exhibit D, tentative sound monitoring locations, there are two already identified on Exhibit D that, where it also shows the five homes that have had complaints or issues. Maybe I'm reading this incorrectly, but aren't these the two areas that you had planned on testing from, anyway? So, why can't we just use that?
Yeah.
That's.
Right? I don't, why can't we just use what's been put before us?
You need to test the sound level near the closest neighbors and.
But how, I mean.
I mean, where's the tent? The tent's right here?
See, though. How long are we going to, and what happens when they come back? And it's not, they wanted it twenty, or they want, I mean, I think this is more than fair. It's two corners where the tent is, it's two corners of the property where the music goes out. Maybe I'm misinterpreting or I don't understand what this means. You know what I mean? Maybe I don't understand it, but I think I do.
When it comes back, he's going to be good.
Yeah, that's true, too.
So, where's the closest? Where's the tent?
I mean, I get it, I'd be flipping a gasket if I lived there and it was eighty decibels. But I live basically in Lawrence, so I hear everything. I'd jam it all summer. It's ninety decibels in my backyard from the home, from the common in Lawrence. I can hear the ping off the metal baseball bats perfectly. Yeah, planes, trains, automobiles, I don't know. Learn to tune it out, I guess.
That could beat the planes going off at three in the morning.
Right, although I have absolute sympathy and empathy for the neighbors. I mean, having, it's all about the bass, about the bass. That would drive me bananas, too. But I think this is a great plan, I don't know.
So, you have to trust the people who paid thirty thousand dollars for a plan.
I think.
It's just acceptable.
I don't know. I mean, it took a long time to get here, but I'm pleased. Am I wrong? So, what'd you find out?
So, yeah, no, according to Exhibit D.
Yeah.
The two areas they're proposing to, see, now I'm confused, though, because if they're, if they're testing, if you're going to test with decibel meters at these locations in the license contingent upon that, then that's, that's probably fine.
Exhibit D.
Oh, okay.
With decibel meters, not, you know.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second. Are we still in compliance with that motion and a second?
The only change on Provision Four is that they're going to comply with Provision Four per the study, but they're going to use a mechanical device of some sort to test it at the locations, right? Because Four is already identified in D.
At the locations that have. At the locations that have been already identified in Exhibit D.
So, but you're gonna, you're gonna, um, I think this Exhibit D is testing the ambient noise level to establish, what needs to be done though is not the, I understand that needs to be established, but then once you are inside the tent and you turn the, the speakers up to nine, it should be retested so you know what the sound levels, is it, is it that. That's, that's the part I'm getting at.
There's a protocol, we have a governor to report that identifies the measuring protocol.
Right, but it's, but what I want is deci- decibel meters at these locations, the same locations that you tested with the ambient sound levels, actual decibel meter is reading, reading the sound. That's what I want.
Sound's logical, but I don't, I'm not noise consulting.
So, that's what, that's what I, so that's what I'm getting at as far as the license is concerned, and that would be what Andrew read, that according to Exhibit D, they're gonna test in the same spot where they tested the ambient noise level with sound devices.
I would think they would have to. How else could they know what the sound levels were if they...
They're saying, they're not, they're saying they're gonna do it mathematically.
But if they're only testing ambient, then it's, it's only giving them background noise, it's not giving them what the noise levels are at the time.
Exactly. That's what I'm getting at.
That makes no sense. I mean, I can't imagine they would do that.
So, the people who did these tests...
That's what I'm getting at.
Have to come up with a solution, right?
No, so, so let's, let's, so the motion is what Andrew read, according to, and they're gonna test at the boundary lines according to Exhibit D, both the ambient sound, which they said they're gonna, and, uh, the actual sound that is coming from the, uh, tent with sound meters.
Yeah, and I would assume that's part of the calibration process, they have to calibrate the speakers.
Yes, I would assume too, Dick, but it, it isn't. And, but we're making it by, by that motion.
Now, what if it's a windy day?
Turn it down. Yeah, I don't know, test on multiple occasions.
I mean, I'm, I'm kinda serious.
Why are you so, what, you know...
Well, because I think this is... They've, they've gone above and beyond. I, I absolutely understand.
Yes, they've gone above and beyond, but we're all there.
But I don't think we need to go out of our way to make it as difficult as possible.
All we're doing is ensuring that it's compliant with what they're saying they're gonna do. That's all we're trying to do.
I think, I think a thirty thousand dollar report and us being able to go there at any time as commissioners with a decibel thing in our hand to go there and listen. I mean, I'm just saying that at this stage of the game, let's move this along. These, this is a long time...
Tracy.
I really feel that way. I'm sorry. I mean, I, I totally respect where you're coming from, but, but to a certain degree, we also have to, you know, this, this is, this is business that, we've been doing this for six months. It's not that they're not being compliant. They're gone above and beyond at this stage. And I understand what you're saying, and I, and I mean, I, I hope we're there.
So, can I suggest what the motion is presented, instead of trying to do this again? That the one change to the report would be in Section Five, not Four, so no amendments to Four. And in Five, after it says, "It will be field tested," we insert, "At the locations identified in Exhibit D of the report." So, the field testing will take place at the, at the squats identified, at the locations identified in Exhibit B.
B?
D. D. Isn't D.
Well, in the calibration section two, which is after, right after that section, it talks about how it's calibrated. Establish the relationship between sound at the edge of the dance floor and at the light array and at the mirror of the two sound monitoring locations. These levels would be high enough to properly calibrate sound levels at these three locations.
I think what's, what's being, the, the, the difference at this point is simply that one is being done via calculation from the sound under the tent with an assumption that based upon experience, the result is going to be X. And what Selectman Gordon is requesting is that instead of being done based on a calculation, it's done as a function of field test with a particular device.
I don't think that's unreasonable. I think, I'm sure that this company will have a decibel...
So, instead of it being tested at the tent and calculated, what Selectman Gordon is requesting is it's actually done in the field with a device.
So... That's what the motion, the motion included there, right?
Well, we got all confused as to the locations, and it, so... I think the motion as originally proposed, strike any amendments to Four, just insert in Five that the field testing will be at the locations identified in Exhibit D with a sound monitoring device would be sufficient to satisfy Mr. Gordon and accomplish what the board is attempting to accomplish.
Thank you.
And then we'll see you back anyhow to update us once it's done. Great. We have motion, Dick second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. So, we're good. Thank you.
It'd be the first license that has a report attached, sure.
Thirty thousand dollar report and equipment.
That's four one, Larry.
So, this one I thought, I mean, this is what I thought was right there.
He's a no.
It says at the mirror and two sound monitoring locations.
Right, but it's all done by calculation and distance. All, it's the same thing, all kept the same. It's involved with a device that's supposed to, right? It's saying the right thing. He doesn't want...
I wanna make sure it's done. That's fine. We're good.
He's gotta come back, leave it to us anyway.
We're good.
We'll send you the, the info.
Motion to move on to licensing.
Second.
All those in favor?
Mr. Chair.
Now, out of licensing. Long as licensing, I've had it years.
Mr. Chair, if I may, I'm, I'm gonna excuse myself to the rest of the meeting. I, I know our meeting was rescheduled tonight, but I have a another conflict that I was unable to get out of. I apologize for the rest of the agenda, but I need to move on.
Thank you for coming in, and we appreciate you coming in, and...
Very much so.
And causing trouble.
And causing trouble. Enjoy, bye, bye.
Okay, we are going to move back, and we still have a good-sized audience here, which is good. We thought we were gonna clear the room, but we get still get some interest here. So, we're gonna go back, um, and go back to communications and announcements. First up, we'd like to ask Gene Willis to come to the podium and update us on the Safe Roots to Schools.
Good evening, Gene Willis, down engineer.
I wanted to be on TV live. So, anyways... Okay, okay, great.
Your fifteen minutes is over.
Okay, bye. So, we're here on the Safe Roots to Schools project. We wanted to come to the board first because we're having the abutters public hearing February twenty-fifth, Wednesday, at the library at seven o'clock. We're notifying all the abutters by mail. Everybody else wants to come, we'd love to have you. It's gonna be an in-depth presentation of what the project is. The board knows what we're doing. We're not changing anything from our last presentation. I brought our consultant, Michael Myers, from T E C, to answer any specific questions you may have. Otherwise, you could come to the full presentation in the library or see us, but we just didn't want you hearing from an abutter, oh, I was at the meeting, this is what's going on. We want to get, let you know about it first, so...
Very exciting.
It's a great project. It's a great project. Any specific questions? Okay, so, the next item, most important item, is I'd like, I'd like to just tell you folks that the reason we're even here is because two moms, town residents, on their own initiative, found out about this grant, went after it themselves, and they're the reason we're here. They went and got it on their own initiative. I mean, just outstanding, and, uh, so I thought maybe the selectmen might wanna say that to them, and they're, they're, they're here tonight. Kristen Hollenbach and Kim Robbins. So, I don't know if you have any questions, what they did or went through. It's a long process. It took a lot of preliminary stuff before we got to this point. You wanna tell them what you did, or...
Yeah, hi, Kim Robbins, of French Farm, and I just wanted to say that this whole Safe Roots to School and the, um, the grant for the sidewalks came out of frustration of kids being able to walk to school safely. I think this is a good step forward for our town. Still feel like we have a long ways to go to address, especially on our main, most main road, Route one twenty-five. But I, knowing that that's a state, um, a state road, someone in the town needs to pick up, I think, the ball and, and coordinate with the state. But Kristen, I think it was actually Judy Timon that actually mentioned this program to me, and I started doing a little bit of research and then got Kristen involved, and she was a great support and advocate for really keeping me going and being a good partner and helping us, and it was a big coordination between the town, the whole, um, school, middle school and elementary schools, really helped out a lot, the police department and the parents. And it was a big coordinated effort over, now, how many years? About three, four? Four years. So, we finally got the money and we're thrilled that we'll be getting some sidewalks built.
Thanks. I just wanna thank you for recognizing the work that we were able to provide for the town. I'd also like to acknowledge the support of Christine Corrales, who's the president of the NAMs PTO at the time, as well as all the teachers, parents, and police officers who helped to make the Walk and Ride to School Days successful. These Walk and Ride to School Days were the very first step in securing our state funding. If we didn't prove that, they weren't able, weren't interested in talking with us. This effort was started as part of the larger endeavor to make our town more accessible for students to walk and ride their bikes safely to school. We urge the town to, town to continue on this path. We believe the state could be persuaded to put sidewalks with curbs on Route one twenty-five from the Andover border to the Haverhill border. Right now, there is a continuous sidewalk from the center of Lowell to the North Andover border on Route one thirty-three. It stops at the YMCA. The sidewalk picks up again at the Haverhill border near Spring Hill and continues all the way to the New Hampshire line. If the state could be persuaded to curb the sidewalk in the section of one twenty-five in North Andover, it would essentially link the three largest cities north of Boston, Lowell, Lawrence, and Haverhill, and, and provide our students with a safe route to get back and forth to school, specifically around the high school. This connection should be a valuable asset to all of us. Thank you.
Kristen, where do you, where do you live?
Oh, I'm sorry, one, uh, South Bradford Street.
So, just by way of that, both of you, you're not the one who believe in living in the area where you did all the work and proved that. So, thank you very much for taking that initiative, and, you know, your children won't even benefit from it, or maybe they will if they want to, or friends have it or something like that.
But it's gonna help the students, especially that area is definitely a fairly difficult area.
Four years of effort to get this done and provide a safe route to children to school. On, on that note, I have a speculative appreciation presented to both of you, Kristen Hollenbach and Kim Robbins, and I'll just read it, they're both the same. In sincere appreciation for volunteering your time in researching and writing the proposal for the Safe Roots to School grant and performing all the requisite work to qualify and obtain full funding. Your dedication and hard work are true credit to you and the community. Thank you on behalf of all the residents of the town of North Andover, signed on February ninth, by the Board of Selectmen. Very much for all your efforts.
Okay, thanks. We'll leave these here if you wanna look at them. These are the project, and I'll come back tomorrow and get them during the day. Is that okay? Or do you want us to take them with us? Leave them up? Okay, great. Okay, again, February twenty-fifth, Wednesday, seven o'clock, Stevens Memorial Library, an in-depth presentation.
Thank you, Gene. Thank you, Mrs. Jimenez. Also, always, uh, also important to recognize, you know, Judy Timon, who, who worked originally, and now Gene's been working tirelessly over the last several months. Having shared a few emails, I can tell he's working tirelessly. There's a lot of work associated with this. The, the great news is that we're gonna receive more than a million and a half dollars to make improvements to the community. That what sometimes is lost is not only the work of those fine residents who helped, but also the staff support that's required to pull this off. This is pretty sophisticated stuff and requires a lot of interaction, so we appreciate Gene's efforts and the efforts of former town plan Judy Timon as well.
I say bravo.
Thank you.
Okay, so, moving along, um, for the next one, we would like to invite Howard Sullivan up to give us a report on the audit for this year, for the F one. Wherever you're more comfortable. You wanna stand, you can stand.
That's fine, this will be fine. First of all, my name is Dick Sullivan. I'm one of the engagement partners to the town. With me tonight is Frank Saretti, who is also the second partner, uh, that is responsible for the town, and Kyle Warren, who's the supervisor, who basically looking at the guys who did most of the work related to the audit. What I just wanna do is, in the short time I'm up here, just kinda walk you through the process of how we go about it so that you know you got an audit done, give you little ideas of some insights that I've seen as part of your financial statements, and then, um, we'll kinda walk through the financial statements first, briefly touch on the federal awards report and finish up with the management letter. When we come in to do the audit, we break it into two sections. We break it into, we come in in the spring and then we come in in the early fall. And what we do in the spring is we do all the stuff that's what I call not date sensitive, things that are, can be looked at that aren't specific to June thirtieth, i.e. the budget, long-term debt. We have to do a single audit, which is a A-one thirty-three piece. We get all that done. We do some transaction testing. And we walk through the whole process of also doing our planning. We came in here, I think it was September twenty-ninth, when we did the year-end work, which is a nice timetable because it means the books were pretty well cleaned and also fit with our schedule really well. That's when we start walking down the balance sheet. We look at your cash, we look at your receivables, we look at your significant liabilities. In this case, the most significant are OPEB, the compensated absences, and your long-term debt. And these are the items that we actually spend a lot of time on, particularly cash, because it's a, um, it's a liquid asset. The internal controls over that have to be strong, and we test to make sure that is the case, as well as test to make sure that the balances that are being reported on the ledger are in fact accurate, not only agree to the ledger, but also agree to the treasurer's work papers and reports. So, that's the process. That's kinda like how we go about it. Now, if one of the things that I do when I'm being given information and maybe I'm not, have enough time to look at, I say, okay, what are some items to note in your report? First of all, it's another CAFRA. I think this might be the fourth year or third year, third year we've done a CAFRA. Very proud of the fact that you've been able to get the certificate of excellence reporting on the prior two, and we anticipate the same for this one. One of the things I saw in the report this year is your GASB forty-five actuarial valuation or your unfunded liability, which we've talked about in the past, went down. It went down approximately thirteen million dollars. Now, the nu- the number's still big. It's eighty-six point six mil, but...
But it's thirteen million less than last.
It's thirteen million. And one of the reasons was is because of some design changes you made in your employee benefits plan in terms of employee contributions. Those little things do the kinda tweaking that make a significant dent in this particular liability. I happen to know also that you, I think, went to the GIC in January of two thousand and fourteen. I would anticipate that you're gonna see another significant dip in that, and the reason being is that that's what I've seen in all of our other clients. Just the savings alone, I can't tell you what that's gonna be because the valuation that was done for this year was seven-one thirteen. You'll probably have one dated seven-one fifteen, and the impact of GIC will be reflected in that, and I would hope that you'll see another positive dent or a reduction in your overall unfunded liability. And you also, um, as part of your balance sheet, have in your stabilization fund, I think a million bucks that you've earmarked. Haven't quite put in the trust yet. But, but it's, it's there and it's sitting there, which is also another significant element of, kind of like your approach to dealing with this problem. The stab funds that you have are, I would say, fairly significant. You've got three point six million dollars in the, in the, what we call the general stab fund, which includes the million dollars that's been kind of earmarked for OPEB. And you have another capital stab fund, which is two hundred and thirty-nine thousand dollars. What that does is it combines itself into what we call unassigned fund balance. Now, unassigned fund balance, and we used to just call it unreserved, but you take your unreserved fund balance and these stabilization funds and combine them. That number was nine million dollars at the end of two thousand and fourteen, which is about eleven percent of your budget. The GFOA and a lot of the measurement tools that you look at in terms of adequate reserves would consider that to be a very good number. And just to share with you, when we track things, I look at things over time. And since, where do I have it here? I think it was since two thousand and ten, you've increased this unassigned fund balance by six point one million dollars. That's a constant building of your reserves, which also helps reflect the fact that you got a bump in your rating to A double A plus. So, people pay attention to this stuff. And when you go from like a double A or a double A minus to a double A plus, you're looking at saving some basis points on any borrowings that you might do. So, there is some tangible, significant evidence of that. Also in there was a refunding. A refunding is like a refi for your, your home. You issued four point two million dollars in debt that to pay off higher interest-bearing debt. That's gonna save you, and I can't, I can't remember if it's ten years or twelve years, it's gonna save you about a half a million dollars in cash over the remaining portion of that debt. And I like the fact of that because somebody's paying attention. You're watching what's going on, and you took advantage of, uh, good rates, particularly the kinda cheap money that's out there right now. For debt that was issued for the capital projects that you have, you issued eight point two million dollars. Two of them primarily related to the master plan that you have going on, and also you have that NSG efficiency improvement program that's going on. I can't say the name of the company. I always just mess it up, but it's Energy Efficient Improvement Program. You also bought a front-end loader, an ambulance, and also some other miscellaneous equipment. There's one element, additional element in these financial statements that I don't wanna bore you with, but I'm gonna tell you about it anyway. It's called the concept of deferred inflows and outflows. It's called the concept of deferred inflows and outflows. In the past, you used to have something called deferred revenues, and then they would go away when the conversion to the full accrual. The GASBY came up with something called deferred inflows and deferred outflows, and they somewhat relate to deferred revenues on the fund base, and there's also on the full accrual basis, there's charges on a refunding that have to be amortized. Now, that's not the reason I'm telling you this. There's a new GASBY coming out at the end of, actually, it's this year, GASBY 68. And what GASBY 68 is going to do is going to take the Essex Regional Retirement System unfunded liability, which is $305 million for the last valuation that they had, it's going to take your 14% ownership of that, which is about $42 million, and stick it on the financial statements now. It's going to be sitting there right on the face of the financial statements where it never had been before. Previously, it had been reported in the notes and part of your RSI. They're bringing it in upfront. And the significance of that is, it's going to blow a hole in your equity section.
Yeah.
It's just going to blow a hole in it. The one thing that I've been asked a lot about, particularly this GASBY 68 and the presentation of it, is what is the rating agencies going to do? In my opinion, not much. They've already known about this liability. They've already vetted it as part of their analysis of the town, so I don't anticipate it being seen as a problem. What I do anticipate is that maybe people who haven't paid attention to these types of liabilities, when they see them hit the front of the financial statements, are now going to be paying more attention to them. And they're going to be looking at the retirement systems and the assumptions they're making and their funded basis, which Essex is only about 50% funded, you know? And they're going to be asking questions as to why. Okay, we talked about the balance sheet we walked down. You ended it with $48 million in cash at the end of the year. Your capital assets were $192 million. OPEB was $44 million, and your long-term debt was $51 million. We audited all of that. Another thing I try to do when I'm looking at to get a set of financial statements is, what's the difference between '13 and '14? You know, what were the changes? On a budgetary basis, which is how you run the town, the fund base is good for the SMP and the full accrual basis is good for the GASBY guys, but you do it on a budgetary basis. And there's a schedule in there that shows that you increased your fund balance by $3.1 million. That was essentially what I would call your profit for the year. Two reasons. Your estimated receipts exceeded what you budgeted by $2 million. The biggest guys were motor vehicle excise and also your tax liens. You don't budget for tax liens. That's just an active process of trying to collect old taxes. You collected $594,000 of that. When you collect tax liens, that drops right to your fund, right to free cash. It's like automatic free cash. So, you take those two factors, plus there were some turnbacks, just under $700,000. Sounds like a lot of money, but on an $82 million budget, it's eight tenths of 1%. So, what that tells me is when you put the budget together, all the people responsible for it did a pretty good job when they were looking at what should be spent in order to maintain the services you want to spend. Your three enterprise funds all posted profits. Notably, water and sewer, because they want to meet their debt service payments, they have to show a profit. I was very pleased to see that Osgood Hill is starting to get better. It was a little bit of a drain in the past, and now it's now showing a positive balance. So, the end result is, there's a CAFRA in front of you. It's 107 pages long. Transmitter letter, financial statements, statistical section. It's actually a pretty neat document, if you like that stuff. But if I was going to say, if you're going to read anything, read the transmitter letter. It's basically the story of the town. A little bit of the MDNA helps, but the transmitter letter is in your words, and it talks about the things that are important, I think, to the town. As far as our process, what we own, the only thing we own is two pages in that report. It's called the opinion. You have an unmodified opinion. It used to be called unqualified. It's a clean opinion. It's the best the town can get. We were very pleased with our interactions with all your financial folks. Not only the questions that we asked, where they timely responded to, the information we asked for was accurate, and frankly, you know, I think we have a very good rapport with your folks, but we are the auditors, and we come in with professional skepticism every year, and we ask some questions every year that aren't asked in the previous year. And everybody did fine in terms of that, those inquiries and those audit questions that we made. There were no internal control issues, which means there's nothing here that I think you have to be worried about. Our management letter talks about a couple of things, but no issues, no significant efficiencies, no material weaknesses. And more importantly, and I think Lynn, you might be even talking about this after me, there were no adjustments that we requested be made to the general ledger as a result of our audit procedures. And the significance of that is, is that that means the information you're getting during the year was in fact accurate and correctly reported, that we didn't have to do anything at year-end to make things right. Okay. That was a real quick way of going through a few hundred hours worth of work on the financial statements. But what I guess I want to leave you with, I think the town has positioned itself well through some efforts over the past few years to build the kind of reserves that are important for a town. I like the fact that OPEB is still on your radar and you're paying attention to it. The capital plan seems to be working. Your debt service is very reasonable. It's less than 8% of your total budget. I think it's 7.52%. Very healthy. You don't want to go below 5, and when you get near 10, then you've got to have some other resources coming in, maybe like an MSBA money coming in. So, the fact that you're laddering your debt, you're paying attention to a certain level that you want to maintain, not only helps with the fact of dealing with the budget, but also helps with the fact of dealing with all your assets, whether they be infrastructure or vertical, and that's important, too. The other report that you have is called the Federal Awards Report. It's a mandated report, because the town receives in expense more than a half a million dollars' worth of federal grants each year. You had $2.1 million worth of expenditures in FY '14. We tested $1.1 million of that, which was all the special education cluster, we call it, mostly special education, of 53% of your total grants. The results were no findings and no question cost, three reports embedded in there, one on compliance with internal control over financial reporting, one on internal control over the management of major grants, i.e. sped, and the other one is the presentation of the actual awards themselves. All those opinions were unmodified opinions, are once again a clean opinion, and it doesn't get better than that. The management letter is great. You had five comments in the prior year. I actually, there's some that are in process of being done, but all five are either fully resolved or have a plan in place to fix. I appreciate that. As your engagement partner, I know my people do, too, from the standpoint that nobody likes to be criticized, and that's what the management letter is all about. It's about telling you things that we think could be done better. I appreciate the fact that the comments that we shared are addressed. We're not, no one's throwing beats at us or anything like that because of the comments we bring up, and they're getting fixed, and I was very pleased to see that. The only new comment we had for this year, and if you kind of evolved, the comments have kind of gone down, down, down each year, is we just wanted to highlight, and I already mentioned it, that GASBY 68 issue, where this is something new. The folks, the actuaries who are doing the work are going to know that this is what's going to happen. There's going to be a couple of present value calculations that are going to have to occur. And there's actually something in here that doesn't affect you, because you're part of a regional retirement system, but GASBY 67 is also going to require things that we didn't have to do in the past. We could basically use the actuaries' report and say we're relying on a specialist. It's a special SAS, Statement of Auditing Standards, that we could do and say if we're relying on a specialist, we don't have to do much work related to it. GASBY 67 changed that. We're now going to have to test the data that the actuary uses to come up with the numbers they come up with. So, that's more of a problem for us than it is for you, but when I talk about GASBY 67 and 68, that's what they're all about. They're related to pensions and the work that has to be done by the auditors related to pensions. So, that kind of wraps up the work that we did and how the process went. I'm more than happy to answer any questions that you might have relative to that. Feel free to ask these guys anything you might want, but we're done for this year.
Great, great news.
Once again, thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you all, thank you for the report. Thank you for your efforts again this year, and, you know, great news all around and sounding better and better every year, and...
It is, in my opinion.
And, you know, of course, the management letter, the items that you identify, those are all, you know, you have to take all the good with the bad, and those are all, were all great suggestions in the past and things that, you know, needed to be implemented. So, you know, no worries about that. Those are all good things, and it's all pushed us forward, so thank you.
Mr. Chair. I would be remiss in not commenting. I've seen this management report seem to be like this sometimes. This is probably the best one I've ever seen since I've been on the board, and congratulations to you and the staff. And everyone's worked hard to get here, and it gets, it isn't always easy. So, thank you and congratulations on a great audit report, so.
It's amazing.
Thank you.
Lucky, thanks.
Any other comments?
Bravo, Andrew.
Thank you, gentlemen.
And Lynn.
Okay. We are losing people. I don't know why.
I don't blame them.
I feel bad. I hope they weren't here.
Poor National Grid guy. We always forget about him.
Ms. Dowd, can we take public comment out of order?
Okay, can we just take the last communications and announcements?
Yeah.
Okay. So, and then we will, we can, I will make that consideration. Okay, so next up, thanks Frank. See you. Lynn Savage, Finance Director, with her six-month financial status report.
Yep. As of December 31st, the second quarter financial report. It's kind of hard to follow that on the audit report, but we're right up there and we're doing just as well, so there's no bad news in this report at all, so it's all but good. Just to bring a few key points, touch upon some of the revenues, the tax, property tax collection revenue is at 48.2%, which is right in line with last year and any prior year, so we're following that with no issues on the tax collection end. Motor vehicle excise through the first six months is at 12.3%. It is slightly down from last year, but as you all know, the large commitment doesn't come out until February, and that's when, March and April is when the large collections come in, so I expect that to pick up, because I do anticipate, based on the economy and the way things are going and what we're hearing, people are buying cars. There's a lot of new cars out there, so I'm anticipating that to, you know, to fall in line and have no issues with not meeting that budget line item. Meals tax collections are up slightly, 57.8%. They're up about 4% from last year, which means it's, you know, business is still doing good. People are coming to town and eating in the restaurants and things like that, so...
Glad business is doing good.
Yeah.
Very anti- Meals tax.
Yeah. No, it is doing very well, so, you know, because we had to wait till we got a few months, you know, every year under our belt to find out how it was going to be really to do any projection, so it is going strong and actually increasing slightly. So, it's a good thing. It is, yep, definitely. Ambulance service collections are at 51.9, slightly down, but that's, it's still within target, so. Inspection fees, which is the plumbing, building, and gas fees, and electrical, that's at 62.1%, which is slightly up. You know, all of these numbers are indicating it's a strong, it's getting to be a stronger economy. People are building things, and this, again, is cyclical. Warm weather comes again, they're going to be out there pulling more permits, because right now they're really not doing too much, so...
You can't get out of your drive like that.
I know. Well, there might be a lot of damaged roofs, so there'll be all kinds of permits pulled.
That's true.
I hope not, but the interest income collections are tracking. They're at 48.3%. We will meet our budget. We did budget accordingly, knowing where the interest rates were going. They're really staying status. They're not really changing much. And once we factor out the motor vehicle excise from the local receipts, we're at 52.46% on all local receipts collected so far for the first half of the year, so that's good. When I produced this report, we were doing great on the expenditure side of the budgets, because we had no snow. And of course, we all know that the amount of snow that we've gotten. I have some preliminary reports from Public Works on the snow budget, and we're about break-even right now.
Really?
Yes.
Really?
Yeah. Well, there's none left, so it's break-even. Well, the first part of the winter, we really didn't have any big storms, so he was just using his own staff and doing the sanding and so on. We weren't calling in the contractors, which is where the big chunk of the money goes, exactly, so...
This budget year, as well, we went up to the first 105 from 758, 75.
We did. Yeah. Yeah, so that helped a little bit, so...
Do you have this week's numbers in there?
The what?
Do you have this week's numbers in there?
I do not.
Yeah, okay.
I will get those. I mean, I have the first storm, the first storm we have, but not the second, so...
We have two other storms that have occurred.
The potentially, right. So, I mean, we are break-even, which was a good thing, and I had been concerned that we would have been upside down at that point, and we weren't. So, Bruce and his staff are doing really well in keeping that all under control, so other than that, all the other budgeted line items are doing, there's no issues at this time. It's halfway through the year. I don't anticipate any major issues and things like that. The enterprise funds, the water and sewer, they're both doing very well. Water revenues are at 53.1% with expenditures at 43.9, but based on the structure of the departments and how they actually work, it's not uncommon for the expenditures to be at that level at this point in the year. The same with the sewer. Revenues are at 52.3 with expenditures only at 38.2. So, things get paid, the debt and things like that, it either gets quarterly or, you know, it's not a debt payment every single month, so it goes up and down. And the last but not least is the Stevens Estate. As the auditors had said, they were glad to see that it had been showing profits, and we are still doing very, going very strong. Through the first six months, right now, we have $97,000 profit, but you've got to understand that that's the collections they've gotten for events that are going to be coming up over the spring and the summer. So, but it's good. It'll even out eventually, but they are doing very good. They have a lot of bookings. They're booked out all of next year for most of the year on the big, you know, event days that would be the Saturday, Sundays, things like that. So, they're doing extremely well. The more that we do for renovations up there, the more you're going to get, because it's going to make it aesthetically a lot better-looking, and things will improve even more. So, it will be back to a good, profitable organization again, so...
Great news.
Yeah, so we're doing good, and everything's running strong so far. I don't see any issues.
Just to throw a little thing forward on the topic, one is I would expect it will be $300,000 to $500,000 over budget when the season ends. Our bills lag by close to 30 days, so that, I think, if we have a somewhat traditional February and not extreme, it'll be $300,000 to $500,000, but we're prepared to cover that without having to do, yeah, anything...
As we do every year.
As we do every year.
Right. Can you explain how, like, snow is the one thing that kind of can be played with? Can you explain that? Because people ask me that all the time, and I know I don't ever explain it.
Legally, Massachusetts, snow and ice deficit, snow and ice budgets are the only budgets that really can be run as a deficit.
As a deficit.
Right. Because that can be raised on the recap sheet if needed to be, which what happens in turn is if we raise $200,000, $300,000 on the recap, that takes away from the operating budget for that particular year.
For the next year.
The next, yeah, the next year.
We don't take advantage of that option.
Exactly.
So, communities would be allowed to run into deficit and then apply that deficit So communities would be allowed to run into deficit and then apply that deficit to the following year, taking away from next year's spending ability. We do the opposite. We, Lynn, with, Lily, with Lynn's help, we place controls in beginning probably in April and start to tell departments to be cognizant of every dollar, so that we, in turn, at the end, make transfers to eliminate the deficit by the end of the fiscal year, which means we don't impact the following fiscal year.
People race back.
That's the, that really big.
Kind of borrow from other.
Right, that's, that really large reallocation that I bring to you at the end of each year.
Right.
Just before town meeting, in order for you to reallocate.
Right.
Um, the, the funds from the other departments to cover the snow and ice deficit.
I'd never explain it appropriately, but I can do much better now, so thank you.
You're welcome. Any questions?
Great job.
No, great job, as always. Thank you so much.
And, and the, the praise that the, the auditors have for you every year is just phenomenal, and thank you. I mean, they just can't say enough about working with you and your team and, and the town and everything, so that's really always great to hear, so thank you.
Great, thank you.
Okay, um, per request of the senior member of the board, we are gonna move, um, the public comments section to, uh, up on the agenda. So I'd like to ask if we have any public comment at this time.
We do.
We do. Hello, could you say your name?
Mary Stewart, Prospect Street, North Andover. I'm here to represent the seniors of North Andover. I have a petition with a bunch of signatures. We're asking you to please turn up the thermostat. We're freezing. We're tired of it. We don't know what to do about it. You're, you're selectmen are our last, um, hope. We understand that in the past few months, we've turned over to a new system, and the thermostat has been set at seventy-two by computer.
Are you talking about the thermostat in the senior center?
Yes, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
It's on seventy-two. Um, the staff has no control over it. The staff are freezing too. If we go in there and we look at the thermostat on the wall, it says seventy-two. But if you take your little thermometer over three or four feet where we're sitting, and we're sitting, we're playing cards or we're sewing, we're not moving around, it's sixty-six. Um, the way the senior center is set up, you can't, um, expect every room to be the same temperature. There are only two comfortable rooms, and that's the conference room and the ladies' room. And they, thank God, and they're.
I can't hang out there all day.
But they have a separate thermostat. The men's room, one day, was fifty-five. Yeah, I mean, like my husband said, you sit on the pot and you're stuck. You're frozen to it. But, I mean, we don't know what to do. People are getting sick. Um, like I said, we sit there and we play cards with our jackets on and our scarves. And I bring my ceramic coffee pot, um, coffee cup, and I have, you know, hot coffee in it. Put my hands around, so I can play cards. This is not the way to treat seniors. You know, you guys gotta do something about it.
So who have you spoken to so far, so we don't have to go through?
Well, the staff can't do anything about it, obviously. They have no control. You know, we've tried in the past before this system, which it was probably a very good idea in theory to save money, but it's, in practice, it's just not working.
So Mary, can you ask, can, the question, and I certainly am aware of the issue, um, two things. What was done in the, who controlled the heat in the past? What was the level of the heat? Uh, other than the anomaly you provided, which was that someone, that there is an individual, just to address the visual of Dawn in the bathroom.
You wanna erase that picture?
I'd rather not do on TV, but, um, that is a separate device which someone had turned off, so it's an anomaly. It was turned back on.
Okay.
It was a separate device that, I can't tell you that Dawn didn't turn it off, but, uh, some male turned it off by accident and it was turned back on. So that's separate. But in the past, what happened? The staff just turned the heat to whatever the comfort level was?
Yeah.
Was it a set number?
If we were sitting there and we were cold after a while, because the way it operates, it blows on you.
Sure.
We would say something, and they would turn it up a little, and then we'd be fine. Or sometimes we'd get up and close some of the doors for the big room, 'cause the big room is.
Big room's tough, yeah.
Awful, yeah, it is.
'Cause I, I can tell you that we have tested the temperature, not just at the thermostat. We've tested it in twenty different locations, and the average temperature in the larger rooms is close to seventy-two degrees. So the struggle for us to a certain extent is, for the folks at home, seventy-two degrees is fairly warm.
Yeah, that's what my house is.
It's, it's, it's not just at the thermostats. It's seventy-one point four, seventy-two point five. It's, it's throughout the building, with the exceptions of the exposed brick locations, for instance Irene's office.
Mm-hmm.
Because it's, the, the decision to make, to make it look period also means there's no insulation. So it certainly does vary from space to pa- the, the quite, the challenge obviously is what's the right number.
Right.
Uh, the only difference in the system is not that the system is less efficient. It's that the system is centrally controlled, as opposed to people going from room to room and turning on the heat. And, and although I see the benefit of being able to do that, one of the struggles is, people turn on the heat to seventy-five, seventy-six, left the heat on all day, left the heat overnight. And so we're trying to figure out what it is that is the right temperature.
Well, how about, my suggestion would be just turn up the thermostat maybe three to five degrees and see what happens.
So average seventy-six degrees in the building?
Yeah, give it a shot. I mean, I know you've tried to, um, change parts of the furnace, and it's not that you guys haven't tried, but it's just not working, you know, we can't take it anymore.
Can we put the controls of the thermostat in the hands of someone in the senior center that, so if there is an issue where it is a particular day?
Yeah, they have it really too good.
Oh, I thought I heard.
It's computerized. Well, you have, you have, everything now can be done, it's all web-based. So, uh, one of, the only concern you wanna be in, and, and I'm certainly sensitive to it, and we've, we've talked about it a lot, believe it or not, um, the, the only concern is you, you don't wanna be completely arbitrary. I mean, that, that is a concern, right?
Mm-hmm.
Setting it seventy-six, then same thing. Is someone, is someone in the building, are they turning it on?
Right, are they turning it off?
It, it's not about the new, the only thing that's different in the new system is some more efficient parts and the ability to control it, so it's not a wall thermostat. 'Cause the reality is, even here, when you have wall thermostat, what happens? Your personal preference may be different to someone else's per- and I'm not picking you, but I'm saying generally. It's in my house, it's different, right? And the per- and the wall thermostat method was that individual people were setting the thermostats at what they felt comfortable with, and we're trying to create a standard. And by the way, the average temperature in that building is two to three degrees above the average, and most of our buildings being cognizant of the fact that it's.
Right, no, I understand that.
So we can look at it, I would rather not just set it four or five degrees higher. That, that's pretty warm, but maybe.
Three?
Start one degree at, one degree at a time and see what the reaction. Seventy-six degrees, Mary, all day long in a center, I mean.
I can't say that that's, I don't believe. I have people running around in bathing suits.
Yeah, see?
Including Dawn, and that's another visual I don't want.
No, but you know, when you come in the morning, I've heard the dolls group, they're cold, because apparently during the night.
What time is that?
I don't know, they must be what?
In the morning.
In the morning, the morning group.
What time, like, eight or ten?
Probably about, is it nine or ten?
Yeah.
The heat is, yeah, so we've modified some of that so that the heat comes on earlier.
They, they turn it down.
So it's the buildings, well, it automatically turns on.
No, but they automatically have it set to go down before Zumba.
Correct.
'Cause, yeah, and we're still there.
That's five o'clock, Mary.
No.
It's currently set, I can tell you what it's gonna, what I'd like to say, and I, and I'm more than willing to have the discussion, 'cause it's an interesting one to have here, is there's a little bit of misinformation combined with how you're failing. I can tell you the, when the heat goes down, because I've been in the discussions. The heat was originally set to go down at nine o'clock to make sure it missed every meeting, but there's only one meeting every other week in the building. So instead of nine o'clock, the heat now goes down at five o'clock. But it was originally set not to go down from the temperature until the lower levels till nine o'clock at night. Well, that didn't make any sense, because.
No, it's not.
One meeting every two weeks doesn't, you don't set the temperature. It is now set to be reduced at five o'clock, when Zumba, Zumba might be four.
Zumba stats at three-thirty, we have to get out at three-thirty.
I forget exactly the time, but it's, it's, it's closer to the five o'clock. I think the number given to me was five o'clock, so it's not shut off while you're there. Uh, but we certainly can adjust it. I, I don't, in fairness, I don't think we're gonna add just four degrees blanket across the top. I think seventy-six degrees in the building is, is, I don't think that's where we're gonna begin, but we're more than happy to start to look at ways to increase it and get a reaction, increase and get a reaction, be more sensitive to when people are occupying the building. So turning it on early enough to make sure it's warm when people come in, and shutting it down, quite frankly, when the building isn't being occupied.
Well, will you check and see what's time Zumba comes in?
I can check what time the thermostat is being adjusted and make sure you guys aren't there.
Because we have to leave for them at three-thirty.
Yes.
And about, what, three o'clock, it starts to get cold.
Okay, then I'll make sure that it's, I'll make sure, I've been told it's five o'clock. If it's three o'clock, then.
Yeah.
Uh, I, I will continue to struggle a little bit with seventy-six. I have to be honest.
Well, no, I'm not saying seventy-six. I'm saying if you set it at seventy-six to me, it'd be seventy-three over there, you know, where I am. Did you, what did you say?
Oh, yeah. Hi, Margie Lambert, twenty-two Prescott Street, and I frequent the, uh, senior center quite often. And what I'm finding is that a lot of our friends are no longer going down there. They are staying away. There is noticeably fewer people there. And it's not because of the weather. It's because they go into whatever meeting they're going to, a game that they're playing. I would, we have this, which is two layers, and my winter coat would be on me within an hour or so, because the cold weather, uh, cold, uh, air is coming right down on us. And it feels like it's sixty-two. It's not seventy-two. It's sixty-two.
It's not sixty-two in the bill. I'm sorry, I'm gonna.
No, I'm telling you what it feels like, all right?
I made it right there.
There's a difference, yes.
So we chill.
It is, it is. Yeah. But, you know, I, I really feel badly that the senior citizens who, they go to a senior center because in their mission statement it says it will be a safe place. This weather and this temperature is not safe for seniors. They have many, you know, different kinds of problems, and they're not coming in. One of them says, "I might see you when the crocuses come."
The tulips.
The tulips, yeah. But then again, she goes in there and you've got the, it's set, the thermostat, and it's cold as a dickens with the air conditioner. She may never come back. And it's not because of not being able to drive down. And it's really not good for these seniors to be restricted, to not come down and interact with their peers and with their friends and socialize and, you know, really have a quality of life that we like them to have. Myself included, by the way, I am a senior.
So let's take an action. We'll, we'll work on inching it up, um, not to seventy-six, but a degree or so, and then see how it works, and we'll, we'll maybe get a, a follow-up report in our next meeting. Um, if you can't make it in, maybe we, we can send it in through a, a representative.
Our emissary, yeah.
And let us know how that, uh, works out.
Okay, we would really appreciate that.
Would you like us to take the petition? Yes, thank you.
It's very professional, Mary.
Thank you.
He has a typewriter. Thank you very much. Any other public comments? And thank you for sending through everything.
No, proceed, Andy.
Sandy Gleed, eighty-one Prescott Street. Haven't seen you guys in a while.
I know.
Um, you're gonna kill me when I raise this subject, but, um, with regard to the, uh, Smolak Farm, um, if I understood the proceed, the proceedings here correctly, you will be reevaluating a, uh, report from them in the spring. Um, I have some concerns, um, and, and, uh, for disclosure purposes, Michael is a friend of mine, but he doesn't know, didn't know that I was coming, and he doesn't know what I'm gonna say. Um, I wanted to, one, correct something that the town manager said, I, probably about six months or so ago, the last time that I heard you guys talking about this. And then also, um, add to something that Dawn said this evening. Um, when, Dawn and I live very close to each other, just a, a few blocks away. And Dawn knows where I live. He's stopped by many times. Um, and I do a tremendous amount of, um, entertaining in my backyard during the warmer months. Um, and when Dawn mentioned, um, some of the sounds he hears from his yard, he, uh, maybe overlooked a few that I know I can hear, and I think he probably can hear as well. Um, the incessant sounds of the high school bands practicing, um, the play-by-play, uh, for any night games. Um, and this is the correction for the town manager, yes, I can hear when there's a wedding at, at the Stevens Estate. Um, you had said that the noise wasn't a problem. There it is. So the difference I see between what's going on at, uh, Smolak Farm and what's going on on Prescott Street where I live is that in my neighborhood, we're not, I'm not anyway. I don't think my neighbors are either. We're not complaining, um, because these are the sounds of a vibrant community. This is, this is one of the reasons why we moved to North Andover. Um, and we recognize that when we purchased our houses and as we continue to live there. Um, however, the town of North Andover is in an awkward position in that, um, you are competing for customers in the wedding sector, the very same people that Michael is. You're in competition with him. So my concern is that when you, um, look at the, the decimal readings and so forth in the spring, and I won't be able to be here, 'cause I'll be hard at work myself, um, if you, uh, try to set standards for him to meet that you yourselves cannot comply with, then I think you are opening the town up to the possibility of a lawsuit. Um, it's extremely hard for farms to remain in business these days. Uh, I, I run a separate but very much related type of business, and, um, a farm cannot stay in business these days doing nothing but selling apples or strawberries. It's, it's impossible. I run a garden center. Garden centers are now getting into the wedding business. Um, you don't have to buy flowers. They're already there. Um, so my concern to you is that, um, you, number one, are aware of the fact that the town is generating no excessive noise in, in, at the same time. Um, and, and if, if standards are set that, that, uh, that the town can't comply with, then it could be, down the line, we could not just be talking about Smolak Farm. We could be talking about lawsuits for, to bring the town itself into compliance. So I just ask you to consider that when you deliberate, deliberate on this the next time. Thank you.
Well, thank you.
Mr. Chair, I absolutely agree with what Mrs. Gleed said.
Um, I think what's helpful in this particular case is that Smolak Farm has offered to make these changes, but I agree with you. I, we, this whole ward lives not far from you. We all live, I mean, I live near the library. Tracy lives near the Thompson School. We hear sounds all the time, and as you said, I live right near the library. When there's a lot of action going on, I'm excited, 'cause something wonderful is going on at the library. But we hear sirens, we hear airplanes, we hear traffic, we hear other events in other communities. But you're right, it's part of living, but, um, I think your point is very well taken, and, um, appreciate you saying something.
Okay, well, thank you. Um, we will move the public hearing, so we can get you on before our consent item. But before we do that, I, I wanna, I'm sorry?
So we gotta text them in the future and tell them to show up at a different.
I know, I feel so bad.
Just, uh, in the way of public comment, I didn't say it during communication announcement, but I would like to thank the DPW, the North Andover Police, North Andover Fire, um, all of the North Andover staff, for all that they've done.
Emergency management.
Emergency management, absolutely, for everything that they've done during these past three significant storms.
Historic times.
Historic times, that they've, you know, the work that they've done to get people back out. I know it's all, it's been frustrating at times, and, you know, it always hasn't been as clean as everyone would like it, but they've been working many hours to get things cleaned up, and they've done a great job. The sidewalks look clean. Uh, we had, received a nice letter today from someone who frequents the roads and sidewalks about how a great job that the DPW's done, so.
Forwarding that on.
Yeah, so thank you, everyone for, um, that's involved with the cleanup. And the town hall employees staff too, because they had to come to work in some of those weather and make sure everything gets done, so thanks to everybody. Great job.
May I just say a couple things really quick, I know, um, adding to public comment. Um, along those lines, for those of you, we, Christmas continues on in the town of North Andover as our wreaths continue to stay up.
At my house, too.
Yeah, so just, please be patient. We've certainly said to DPW, have higher priorities, but they will eventually come down. And I'm gonna take a liberty this evening that I haven't really taken, um, some of you know, the family. Um, at the request of her dear son, we just lost, um, a member of our community who absolutely loves the town of North Andover, and she was very politically minded. And she is a dear, dear sweet lady, and actually my mother's best friend from kindergarten. They went to the Bradstreet School together, lifelong friend. So I'd like to pay tribute to, uh, Priscilla Cronin Quintal. At the request of her dear son, who works in the janitorial staff at the school system, from Paul Quintal. So here, Paul, here's to you and your wonderful mother. God rest her soul.
I appreciate his sympathy, yes.
That's it?
Okay, well, thank you for that. Okay, I'll, um. I'll hear a motion. Do we need a motion to go into the public hearing?
Oh, good.
Okay, so we are going to take public hearing now, um, for National Grid and Verizon, uh, joint poll petition for Prescott Street for the new fire station.
Oh, is that why you're here, Sandy?
As soon as you said Prescott, he was probably like, "Oh, no." No one ever comes.
Good evening. David Boucher, Senior Designer at National Grid, eleven oh one Turnpike Street in North Andover. I'm here tonight, uh, on a petition to place one poll on Prescott Street, uh, number eighty, eight-eight, seven and a half, um, for the new fire station that's going in there. It's currently under construction. Um, we, we, we need the new poll there in order to feed to the transformer that, uh, transformer location that had been given to us by the engineer for, engineering firm for the town that's provided plans to us. So, that being said, if, um, if the town sees fit, it would enable us to, um, go forward and place the poll as shown in the, uh, sketch that we've given you to, um.
But just a question.
Yeah.
Before we move, make a motion. Okay, we couldn't do like, um, not a poll, but an underground, more of an underground service or something?
It's gonna be underground from that poll.
It's gonna be underground, but you still need the poll to get the service to that location?
Yes, there's a, an adjacent poll to it, but there's a device on that. And the next one after that has, it's the corner poll, and, and there are services off of that that are for the light, uh, the street lights, the traffic lights.
Okay.
Um, so it, there wasn't any available poll there to use. That's the only reason why we're, we're asking for the new one. And from that poll, go underground approximately, I believe it was eighty feet, um, to the transformer on the private property of the, uh, the fire station.
Okay. I think we need to first close the hearing?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Is that true?
Did we even open it? We never even opened it.
I think we're just treating this as a, we call it public hearing when we have a poll petition, but we're not similar to other public hearings.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
You're all set, sir, thank you.
All right, thank you. While I'm here, I know there is another petition that I believe you may have tabled for First Street.
Twenty-six, till the twenty-third?
Is that going to be on the twenty-third?
As long as they resolve their issues, yeah.
So it's still planned to happen on the twenty-third?
Right.